Meeting's ordered at seven oh one if everyone can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go into our roll call. Mr. Lincoln here. Mr. Keg here. Mr. Shaver is not here. Mr. Becker. Mr. Wirt is not here. Ms. Pressler is not here. Ms. Dravnik.
Here.
Mayor Keg.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Uh, Borough Council did not hold an executive session today, so you can scratch that off your agenda. Uh, we do have an agenda amendment, however, uh, I will be looking to amend the agenda to authorize the engineer to submit a scoping application to PennDOT. Or the twenty twenty four Green Light Go grant application. Uh, we just found out that the deadline filing is prior to our next meeting, which is our next meeting is December nineteenth. And this filing needs to be on December fifteenth at the latest. Uh, so this will be an application to uh work on the traffic signals at the intersections of Seventh and Redding, Eighth and Redding, and Seventh and Parkside Drive North. Uh, do I have a motion to uh add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second. Second by Mr. Lincoln. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will throw that into the engineers' report then. Okay. Closing the floor to agenda amendments, and before we have public comment, we do have a commendation to announce. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mayor Keg.
Um, so this commendation is in recognition of Andreas. And I practiced the time so many times and I'm still gonna butcher it. Azaza? Azaza, I'm so sorry. Um, should I stand? Would you stand with me?
So, um, I'm gonna ask for.
Isasa.
Thank you. So this is for Andreas Isaza on November twenty first, twenty twenty three. Whereas in recognition of outstanding service, unwavering dedication, and invaluable assistance provided during Palmer's disaster and subsequent events, Mr. Andreas Isaza's exceptional language proficiency, adept problem-solving skills, and commitment to community service has significantly contributed to the well-being of West Reading. And Mr. Isaza's, Mr. Isaza played a pivotal role in translating communications during Palmer's disaster, ensuring accurate and sensitive information was conveyed through various channels, including his active participation in support of the children, providing comfort and assistance to the affected families while demonstrating passion and solidarity.
And whereas Mr. Isaza's consistent communication and voluntary efforts underscore his exceptional character and unwavering commitment to enhancing well reading, West Reading's well-being. His ongoing translation assistance facilitates effective dialogue, fostering a deeper understanding within the community.
Now therefore, I Samantha Keg, Mayor of West Reading, on behalf of residents and council members of the Borough of West Reading, you hereby recognize, give special tribute to and commend most highly Andreas Isaza for his outstanding contribution to the Borough of West Reading. Can I thank him and bestow on him this commendation as a token of thanks for all his efforts for assisting our community in times of need? Thank you so.
Thank you so much.
We also have, uh, Michael Rivera, and Christian Leibach, and Chas Bean, who's here on behalf of the body of good on the go.
Andres, uh, we have a certificate for you from, on behalf of the County Board and the Board of Commissioners, uh, which we'll read here, uh. I know translation isn't easy, especially when you're standing there, someone's talking, you're listening, you're trying to translate and listen and train and keep on going. So it's, I commend you for, for doing that and being willing, uh, to do that. We have Andres Isaza currently serves as the Town Recruiting Manager at Aratek Recruiting and Staffing, has been a remarkable asset to West Reading. The exceptional language proficiency and adept problem-solving skills were evident during the R and Palmer tragedy, where he played a pivotal role in translating communications through various channels. Beyond his professional duties, Andres actively engages in volunteer initiatives that promote inclusivity, making him an outstanding contributor to our community. As borough county commissioners, we are pleased to commend Mr. Isaza for his invaluable assistance in translating during the R and Palmer tragedy, especially through individual and the continued communication with the affected families. This is given by the First County Board of Commissioners, and we provide this certificate to you today.
Thank you, Andres. Thank you so much.
I'm not gonna read ours. Probably somewhere, but, um, you know. You know, wanting to, uh, present a citation on the common law. You know, we always like to highlight people who do good things to, to show what's, what's great about our communities.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah.
If I may want to thank the mayor and thank you as well for having him be able to do that, because not everyone understands the importance of having a translator that can communicate with the families that have been affected by this tragedy. My wife is bilingual, but when something tragic or something with her family happened, she reverts back to her first language, which is Spanish. So being able to communicate here in the ceremony and other things in their primary language, that's, that was really meaningful for those families. So thank you, uh, for being sensitive to those people and their families. Thank you.
And my thanks as well, you guys. It, it's very easy to celebrate a community when everything's going right. But unfortunately, you learn more about a community when there's a tragedy. And the things we learned about this community is that it pulls together. This is an example. People come out that you didn't even know and said, what can I do? How can I help? Amazing community. I hear from county commissioners across the country, uh, what, what happened with Palmer? Because it was a national story. So thank you for the example you said. And I'm gonna just thank you for the example you said.
Of course, thank you. It was a pleasure. Appreciate it, you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. In the meantime, we will continue on and I will open the floor to public comment. Jim, you're always first, so.
Uh, this is an update on the business coverage tax. Activity. But apparently there's, what I'm finding out that is the system is working. Mr. Hunt, as depending upon the first one income tax, was inspired him with all the financial information that he needs to research in the back three years. And I don't think it's getting to the, getting to the festival. He hasn't met himself in a fucking specific that he never was ready. As a demonstration, he didn't disappear from the. Over that two different products on that this channel in a capable and clear.
And then we.
Simple fact that, um, there were four hundred and thirty seven delinquent counts that showed actually before the previous meeting. Of those, two hundred and seventy two of the claims. We now have seven eighteen now. With the middle of the second. And of course, he opened, he could patch them, get those people. I mean, I just want that some information on it. Finally. I read that. But he said, paying off the license and so on. But the owner of that property was in New York. I think my little A two hundred and stuff out this year. It's been there. Apparently, this, before we, they, they own information, he had it. And they in turn, we spotted, we spotted a fan. That's a big. But the thing we guys who die. They'll sit. If I spoiled the game, the jet, it would be an option. Or combination that he can establish in two thousand nineteen is the base. In that base, my first is this. Yes. Seven, seven hundred some accounts. Of that, two hundred some didn't pay or had no information. And they no pay, now no something, if it's a die. This is without it. This is a solid house and so forth. But that's what we can track them. Because it's only five hundred, it's a three. During pandemic, you know, we could just pay the bills or whatever. It was a big worry in there. So I think we could next to like this by having the borough send in that information, which is in-house. Getting same.
I'd ask that you continue working with the administration to make that happen. I'm not positive what information that we may have. Uh, but I would defer to, you know, our treasurer, Assistant Treasurer and Dean, or things like that. It sounds like it's moving in the right direction for us.
Oh, yes.
So. Took moving to Berkhymmer. It's what it was, so. Fair. Thanks, Jim. Anyone else for public comment? And inside and none online. I will close the floor to public comment. And move into the approval of the minutes. So before you, you have the October eighteenth regular meeting, the October twenty fourth budget meeting, and the November fourth budget meeting minutes. So looking for consideration to approve the minutes. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Mr. Obnick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Into ordinances and resolutions. So first up is a ordinance that they're looking to advertise for the membership of the planning commission. Uh, we do have another person defecting from, uh, planning, and it's becoming increasingly difficult to keep a nine-member board. Uh, so what would happen is they are looking to move from a nine-member board to a seven-member board. Uh, and in doing so, it would also reduce the number of council members on planning commission to two. Uh, that is a state ordinance, uh, or is through the Borough Code, uh, that we have to do it that way. So, uh, does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries on to another ordinance, uh, parking prohibited at all times. Uh, we're looking at authorizing the advertising of an amendment to prohibit parking on Court Street, uh, between Fourth Avenue and Eighth Avenue, and as well as Plain Alley, uh, between Linden Lane and Sycamore Road. Does anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, looking for consideration to authorize the advertisement. So motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next up is the ordinance to consider, uh, the advertisement of an amendment to the water rates and charges. Uh, Dean, do you have any information on that beyond?
Uh, no, it's just that way the Water Authority is raising rates on us, so we need to do in kind with the residential area, and then we're also gonna raise it a little bit more for the, for the industrial and the commercial end.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Think that they passed a ten percent increase?
They did.
As opposed to twelve. So it was a little bit lower than we thought, but still a very hefty increase all across the board. So uh, looking for consideration to authorize the advertisement.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries on to resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, which is the extension of the local disaster emergency. I'm hoping that we're coming close to not needing this one. Uh, we're inching that direction, uh, but still a few more things to kind of check off the list before we get there. Uh, does anybody, anybody have any questions on that resolution? If not, looking for approval. So motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Keg. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, which is the police pension contribution. Uh, this just resolves that we are affirming the members' contributions to the police pension plan of eight percent for the year of twenty twenty-four. Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval.
Moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second. Second by Mr. Lincoln. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, which is a new bulk refuse collection policy. If you remember, we talked about this a couple of months ago, and with the new trash, uh, collector, well, same trash collector, but a new contract starting in the new year. We are moving towards a different bulk refuse collection, uh, style. Let's put it that way. So rather than once per month that you will be allowed to stick out one item, uh, this will move towards you being able to put out uh, as many as two items per week. Uh, you will be required to purchase a tag from Borough Hall for items that are too large to fit in your trash container. Uh, we do have a list of some exhibits of bulk items, uh, that may fall under each, uh, category for small, medium, and large. But it is two per week. Uh, you need to provide contact information, the date and address for the collection, and a description of the item. So that way you can't, uh, just grab one of those and stick it on anything. It actually has to match what you are throwing away. So that you can't buy a five dollar tag when you should have bought a fifteen and so on. Uh, tags have to be purchased a minimum of forty-eight hours in advance of the collection. Uh, they must be affixed to the item that you were disposing. Same things still apply that it's no more than seventy-five pounds or five feet in length. Uh, we are not offering any type of refunds if somebody happens to steal whatever you're looking to give away from the alley. If it's some schmo in a pickup truck taking it out of the alleyway, or if it's the trash collector, we don't offer refunds. It was taken away, not our problem. Um, and number eight in the guidelines is, uh, we will start offering metal pickup free for borough residents, but it does have to be scheduled in advance. So you'll need to, uh, call ahead of time. Uh, the deadline to schedule pickup is Monday afternoon. They'll do pickups on Mondays, and you'll just call the Borough Hall here. Uh, there are some added things in there, but things like refrigerators, air conditioners, anything with Freon has to have it all removed and have a certified Freon free sticker to be picked up. Uh, things that still are not able to be collected include computer equipment, televisions, paint cans, tires, motor oil, propane and gas tanks, and hazardous materials. Uh, and like I said, there is a, uh, very wide-ranging, uh, group of things here. They broken down for small items, which would include things like uh, small desks, uh, kitchen chairs, ottomans, nightstands, high chairs, uh, to medium items, which will be like coffee tables, cribs, changing tables, dressers, recliners, uh, pool covers, not that anyone has a massive above-ground pool here. Uh, and then we also have large items, uh, so like area rugs, ping pong tables, entertainment centers, vanities, large mirrors, things like that. Uh, so that will uh, hopefully guide us towards, uh, exactly what each item's worth is. Uh, there are certain ones that do need to be dismantled and bundled, and eventually the bulk refuse ticket will look like this that you would have fixed. It's right here on the back, so you would stick that right to the item that you're looking to get rid of. Hopefully this will uh, do a couple of things. It will alleviate the number of items that you may need to hold on, hold on to for a full month, uh, so that you're no longer uh, you know, hanging on to large items and you can't get rid of them. Uh, it will also help alleviate some of the, uh, stress for the trash company of not necessarily knowing on a first Friday how much they need to pick up. Uh, and we saw that as very evident when we received bids. Uh, tech, quite frankly, they just don't know what to plan for, so they plan for the worst. So.
When all the other, uh, municipalities around us are doing it, and it's, it's working for them, so.
So small items are five dollars, medium items ten, and large items are fifteen. Does anybody have any questions on that bulk refuse policy? Otherwise, looking for, uh, approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That will be effective starting January first, twenty twenty-four.
Are we publicizing that?
I'm saying those Facebook.
And I'll post something, yeah, inevitably, so.
Right, right, right.
Probably make a video. It's a big change. We just need to make sure we can get it out there as much as possible.
There is gonna be some pain points when we first start that. The first Friday of January will be interesting, I'm sure, so. All right, uh, next up is the refuse and recycling fees, a consideration to adopt an amendment that would be imposed for refuse and recycling collection services effective January first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, during our previous, uh, budget meetings, we were looking at potentially raising it to one-ten per quarter based on uh, what we had received and what we expected, uh, for expected trash costs. We actually got really good news that we'll, uh, jump into in the engineers' report with the landfill service contract, uh, coming in much cheaper than we anticipated. Uh, so we are anticipating, uh, Jeanette, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, roughly like eighty-five thousand-ish, somewhere in the mid-eighties, uh, for savings.
Right, correct.
Every year.
Wow.
So that will, uh, match our trash contract, three-year contract with one-year extensions, but, uh, I did have Jeanette bring up a trash cheat sheet for us. Uh, because what would obviously be on the table, we had removed, uh, an alleyway paving in order to alleviate what could have been a larger, uh, amendment to the fee for refuse every quarter, and this will hopefully alleviate that. Uh, but she provided all the options for us, so, uh, Jeanette, would you like to, uh, explain everything that's kind of dumped in here?
She's sure. Um, so on the top of the sheet, yellow is the column we're looking at for the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, uh, so with what's projected that's top, we should have around a hundred and seventy-two, uh, thousand-dollar, um, fund balance. Um, that's what's on your paperwork. Actually, I was tweaking it a little more. Um, and actually got it up to, um, a higher balance because the revenue, I wasn't calculating the, um, penalty amount in there, so I added that in. Sure.
I changed this.
That's as far as.
That's as far as it goes.
Um, so when I, I changed the, um, the revenue, uh, back to a hundred dollars a quarter. Um, and I added in the penalties. So actually, your cheat sheet is a little low because it has six hundred and eighty thousand as the revenue, and I think it's gonna be more like six hundred ninety-four thousand. Um, so with that being said, the rates, I'm, don't believe we need to raise them at all. I think we can keep that at a hundred dollars a quarter. Possibly go to a hundred and five in the next following years, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, the new Morgan landfill is only fifty-seven eighty a ton as opposed to um, gonna be a hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents a ton. Um, and we've added back in the transfer to seven, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars to do Park Alley next year. Um, so I would like, uh, if we would not raise the resident disposal fees to a hundred and ten like we were, uh, supposing. So.
Right.
Basically, yeah.
So we get to keep disposal fees where they're at for next year and add back in the alleyway.
Correct.
And that'll all make sense once, once we get to that actual item in the engineers' report, so. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Doing that, where does our fund balance end up for the end of next year?
Um, it should be more like a hundred ninety-one thousand.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Otherwise. Well, technically, we're not changing the fee, are we?
No.
So I guess we can table that one. We're not changing anything. All right. So let's table Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine. I'll use that number for something else, I guess. And then so next will be the, uh, thank you, Jeanette.
You're welcome.
Uh, next will be Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, which is the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Borough of Wyomissing. Uh, looking to share road maintenance equipment and manpower. KT, do you want to touch on any of that?
I can go and note a little bit more than Carrie. Uh, so for, for years, we've always done about word of mouth or the handshake agreement with us and Wyomissing, always working well with each other, whether it was manpower or equipment. Uh, this makes it more official. Wyomissing ran into a snag the other week, so they needed to do it more official on their side, which just pushes us to doing it on our end. So the resolution is for us, uh, agreeing to that with them, or do I have that backwards?
Then. Is our.
The resolution is to approve the agreement.
To approve the agreement.
For intergovernmental cooperation.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on that resolution? Otherwise, looking for approval. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries into the consultants' report. Uh, Dan, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
All right, so close the floor to that and move into the engineers' report. Ms. Pam.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I'm one of those little bugs that I think we're all carrying around. Oh, well. Uh, the twenty twenty-three road project, of course, was completed, and the maintenance period important date is now at the end of the report, so we track that for the one year. So Carrie, Dean, Chip, you can go out in prior to that expiration to make sure that everything's up to code, and if not, the H and K would have to come out and repair. Number two, the D C E D, uh, grant application for the current one, year eight. We are coordinating, uh, submitting a provisional services agreement for the design, bidding, and construction of the year eight signals. And then, as you heard earlier in the meeting, uh, under this item in my engineers' report, we're going to approve the scoping application for year nine for the Green Light Go since the scoping application is due December fifteenth, which is prior to your next council meeting. So you need an official motion to approve that scoping application.
You sure do, and now it's on the agenda. So looking to authorize the engineer to submit a scoping application to PennDOT for the twenty twenty-four Green Light Go grant application. Does anybody have any questions? Otherwise, looking for approval.
I moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik. Second. Second by Mr. Lincoln. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I quick want to jump back. I'm also working down Park Alley for twenty twenty-four. Is that correct? The payment project to remind myself. Make sure that's on the list. Uh, the CFA, uh, working towards the contract. It's slow. Um, kind of getting these, yes, I G going, but there was equipment delays. It was a potential scope for work change in eliminating the one pole. Uh, very costly. Instead of a separate pole, we are possibly going to mount the camera on, I'll call it the turn lane mast arm.
Yes.
Uh, and the camera and a different setup, but would save money. There may be a wash because of equipment costs, overrun, some things that have happened since their initial. But if we eliminate the true new pole and mast arm, overall, there may be a, a cost savings for you. Uh, for now, though, we're keeping with the, all the reimbursements are exactly what the grant was, the two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Any overrun would be the borough's responsibility. So that's.
One note on that.
Mm-hmm.
PennDOT has a document that's required to attach non-signal items to the mast arms, so we just want to make sure that gets processed. I don't know that they, for cameras specifically, I don't know that they say no, but you just need the document. Yep.
Okay, and the next year, Chief, Dean, we're gonna make sure that we try to do an LSA. It'd be the same timeframe, September first and November thirtieth. I think you want to do the circle, possibly. That was on the agenda, or some other things, and extensions to the same camera expansion and safety for the community. camera expansion and safety for the community. So we'll keep that in the agenda. Uh, pickleball court, no action. Uh, any update on the fire door?
Uh, this first maybe it was January twenty-ninth. As a date, delivery date.
Every day.
Yes. Once it's here, they said, uh, it, they can have it up in one day. Just might have them scheduled on the day to be here.
Well, I want to come and press the button, so.
Chad said he's first.
I don't mind. You want to do the inaugural.
Natalie, um, Ann Street, monthly model part of meeting, I heard a little bit, there's still delays with budget. Correct, so all these, uh, grant applications through D C E D and the C F A are again delayed with budget mess. Uh, we'll keep it posted. We haven't heard anything concrete either. Uh, solid waste, nothing on the proposed permit lots, solid waste to recycling contract. That went well, so the base amount for the this is, Holland Box is one million ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars. And when you add the disposal contract, that came up to then about one point four, the two nine four plus the one point nine, oh, nine. Um, and if I recall correctly, it was one point six plus was the alternate that the trash contractor paid. So, yeah, big savings just on the books that way. So I'm glad there was a cheat sheet put together, but bottom line, yes, you're gonna save, which is a good one for the rest. Especially listening that now we're gonna do some other paving. So it's a win-win for everybody. Um, so I don't have any action on Holland Box contract, but I understand there should be action on New Morgan landfill or Republic, whatever they're doing business as. Uh, for the disposal, down one seventy-six.
Uh, we do have, it looks like Andy here, so as I did with the, uh, trash contracts. Andy, if you're online and have anything to say, uh, now's your chance. Otherwise, we'll keep moving.
Not really a lot to say, but the, the official name is New Morgan landfill, like you said, but we are owned by Republic Services, so that, that's where. If you go down there, there's a sign that says Republic Services, but.
I see it every day.
Okay.
Alright, uh, so on the, uh, page behind here, we, you see that we did have, uh, three bidders for that. Uh, one was, uh, New Morgan landfill, one was Burke's Transfer, one was J P Mascaro, uh, who we currently use. Uh, Morgan landfill came in with a three-year contract at two hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. A low bidder by almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, uh, compared to Burke's Transfer. Uh, Burke's Transfer was at four seventy-nine, four hundred, and J P Mascaro was at five fifty-six, five fifty-nine. Uh, there are one-year contracts, uh, added on to the end, just like our trash bids as well. So that roughly puts it at, uh, New Morgan's around fifty-seven eighty a ton, Burke's Transfer is around ninety-four dollars a ton, and Mascaro's around one oh nine thirteen. If I did my math right.
Save it's.
So, yeah, considerable savings there. Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, I would assume that we're looking to award it to the apparent low bidder in New Morgan landfill for, in the amount of two hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars a year for years twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, for a hundred and eight thousand two thirty-nine in twenty twenty-seven and a hundred thirteen six forty-five in twenty twenty-eight, uh, should we nee- need those one-year options?
I'm a friend. Excuse me, you did.
We did, they look, they're fine. Everything's great, yeah.
Alright, so looking for consideration to accept any award, the landfill service contract as described.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries. I'm happy to have, like, happy news about the budget, so.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
My daughter just got home from college, so we're gonna decorate a Christmas tree.
There you go.
Nice. After Thanksgiving.
No, no, no. I'm not here.
I've already lost my battle.
See, how many Christmas trees did Tony put up?
Two, in the same room. So, literally went and bought another one, because one wasn't enough, so.
Nothing wrong with it. After holidays, you know, we immerse ourselves in the happiness of the holidays.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the sewer portion of the engineer, as usual, we have the attachments for the pump stations. Again, the five hundred block pine street water we discussed, uh, C F A and V C D are not moving anywhere. Under zoning and code, there are some things that we're working with Chad and Elba on, uh, including a zoning variance as well as some demolition and potential of business sign, off-premise business sign, if I got that correct. There was some inquiries, so. A little bits and pieces of some things popping in and out that have known we needed our assistance. And that's all that I have this evening, except to say Thanksgiving is coming up, so may you have a blessed holiday with your family and friends and be safe in this weather and everything, so bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, very much.
Does anybody have any other questions on the engineers' report? Otherwise, looking for approval. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna go through first one.
You're relieved. Okay. Next, we'll move into the council president's report. I do have one action item here this evening. Uh, we were in contact with Alvernia University, and they are willing to offer a whole slew of us, uh, a twenty percent discount uh, for higher education purposes. Uh, that would be for attaining your master's degree, I believe maybe some, uh, post-grad certificates as well. Uh, but it's very similar to the agreement that they entered into with the county and the county commissioners. Uh, so it would give that twenty percent discount, uh, to all borough employees, to fire police, to the fire department, to the police department. Think I, uh, to Public Works, if anyone wants to go into higher ed. Uh, so everyone that is a borough employee is covered. It also covers everyone who is currently sitting on council. It also covers anyone who is sitting on a current committee or commission. And last but not least, it also covers employees and business owners up on Penn Avenue and beyond, uh, who are connected with the W R C R F. So anyone who works in West Reading, uh, connected with the C R F is able to receive that twenty percent discount as well.
Unlike combined.
Well. I would use it if I was going back for my masters. Uh, but they did send over a contract to us, so this is just consideration to allow the solicitor to review said contract with Alvernia before we agree to enter into it. Any other questions on that? That's great. Or it's fantastic, especially for police. They have a large criminal justice contingent over there, including the police academy. Um, I mean, this was for post-grad items, so after everyone gets their bachelor's, they'll be able to use it towards the masters as well, I'm saying. Uh, if there are no other questions, looking for, uh, approval to allow the solicitor to review the contract.
So moved.
Uh, I'll give that one to Denise. Motion made by Ms. Dravnik, second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, that is all that I have for my report. Also, hi, Mark.
Feel like going in late.
You're good.
Okay.
All good. Just happy you're here. Uh, if anybody has anything else, uh, that's my report, so. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Avnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries. Dino, you're down to seven items.
Uh, well, we punched in as many as we could to avoid a second council meeting next week and.
They may have combined a few.
Yeah. Uh, so, good evening, everybody. Uh, so, seven action items, yes. First action item is consideration to allow myself to execute an amendment to the parking lot management agreement with us and the five hundred block of Penn parking lot. Chip Lutz, Back Nine Realty.
So the stipulation there is that we are, is a fifty-fifty split after maintenance rather than before. Which is what we currently have. It was the way it was supposed to be, uh, and now it's being rectified. Any questions on that? Seeing none, looking for approval. So, motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Uh, after, uh, the treasurer talked to Malley and they were unwilling to adjust their rates for next year, I need, uh, consideration and allow myself to solicit auditing services by sending out letters to multiple auditing groups.
Remember, we had questions at our last budget meeting about why the, uh, cost from Malley jumped, um, somewhat significantly compared to, uh, previous years. Uh, they gave us their reasoning, uh, but we were also allowed to solicit auditing services and see where everyone else lies. So, it's not that they've done a poor job, uh, we just want to dip our toes in the water and see if there's a better deal out there. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, looking for approval.
I moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Number three, consideration to authorize myself to execute an agreement with Safety Net Sanctuary for animal control services for the calendar year twenty twenty-four and not to exceed five thousand dollars.
There you go. So with that, uh, we talked about it during the budget meeting in regards to Animal Rescue League's jump in, uh, asking price. Uh, jumping from a dollar twenty-five a resident to two fifty a resident. It would double our cost for next year if we stayed with the A R L. Uh, they're also reducing services, uh, compared to where they are currently at. They're getting rid of twenty-four-seven service. Uh, getting rid of a bunch of things, actually. Um. And then the following year, they're expecting to jump above, uh, seven dollars per capita from a dollar twenty-five this year. So. Yeah. Uh, we did have.
They're telling a story with that.
Uh, yep. We did have Safety Net Sanctuary before, if you recall, uh, when the A R L previously did, uh, something like this. Uh, we decided to go with Safety Net Sanctuary. Uh, they have supposedly fixed a lot of the problems that we had the first time around. Uh, and they're looking to, uh, add on to their, their slate. Uh, they're also able to be an animal control officer, which they were not able to be, to do, uh, the last time around. So ultimately, we end up with, uh, hopefully better services than we did the last time, uh, but certainly the cheapest as well.
While she can enforce the code red, code blue that we just implemented, I'm sure.
Sure can.
Yes, that question.
Yeah.
Big deal. She sure can. Uh, there are some stipulations in there. Obviously, they're not removing dead animals. Uh, they will not handle rabbit or hostile animals uh, presenting obvious signs of aggression and danger. Uh, they're willing to address an aggressive dog issue, but have the right to refuse or ask assistance from law enforcement after the assessment of the animals completed. Uh, they will not handle feral cats, spay and neuter practices, and/or the handling and implementation of colonies of feral cats. What they will do is provide live traps for T N R. Uh, any stray cats have to have a collar to be brought to their facility, and their ultimate goal is to be reunited with their owners. Uh, so they do have alternate resources helping with stray cats and kittens. They will address any call that you have, but they will send you somewhere else, uh, for things like that. And then, uh, yep, they're able to investigate into any claims or accu- accusations of animal cruelty, and it is a one-year contract. Yeah, that's about it. And they're in Fleetwood. Did I miss anything? Okay. Uh, looking for, uh, if anybody has any questions. Any questions on the animal control contracts? Seeing none, looking for approval to enter into an agreement with Safety Net Sanctuary for animal control services, uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars for the calendar year twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Uh, fourth action item, consideration of accepting the winning bid on public surplus for the two thousand fourteen Ford Taurus. I believe we, it won for eighteen hundred fifty dollars today.
That what we were hoping for?
We, I was expecting less, so.
Got a bad transmission, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a shot transmission. We weren't gonna sync that back into it.
Does anybody have any questions on that bidding process? Seeing none, looking for consideration to accept the winning bid. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Uh, fifth action item is consideration of a reappointing Mike Hart to the Westernburgs Water Authority Board with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
So a five-year term for Mr. Hart currently serves for us and, uh, would like to continue. Looking for a motion to reappoint Mr. Hart to the Westernburgs Water Authority.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Uh, number six, uh, consideration of accepting a letter of resignation from Jim Keller from Planning Commission and Melinda O'Neill from Economic Development Committee.
Both of them have very busy schedules, and, uh, Jim has a change in his schedule that, that necesses, necessitated a, uh, resignation. Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise, looking for approval of their resignations.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
And last but not least, consideration to allow the borough solicitor and engineer to attend a zoning hearing board hearing to express proposed development concerns of a parcel bordering Walnut and Olive Streets in December.
We discussed this at our last meeting, and we're opposed to it, so this would allow the solicitor and engineer to attend that zoning hearing board meeting and speak in opposition on behalf of council. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, looking for approval. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries.
That is my report. If anybody has any questions.
Anything else for Dean? Looking for approval of the manager's report. Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
There's only two of you, so. Second by Ms. Dravnik, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries. Alright, on to the mayor's report, Mayor Keg.
So, um, bit of an eventful month. Um, October thirty-first was trick-or-treating. Um, I had a lot of, there was a lot of positive feedback about the timeframe so that the younger kids could kind of get out while there was still, um, light outside and it was a little bit safer. I believe that's a little rescue of the well, so. Um, November seventh, I did a fire officer swear in, um, which I would believe we have like seven helping us at the eighth.
Eight for the Christmas.
At the tree lighting, so all those swear-ins are paying off.
Lance didn't just clone himself, did he?
No. Shadows in the world for that. Um, November ten, or I'm sorry, November ninth, um, there, the light in the attic right above the Barley Mo had their official grand opening, not their soft opening. Um, and which is wonderful. I know that Council President Ryan, um, was able to attend the soft opening.
And fill.
And fill, yeah. Absolutely beautiful space, um, great addition to the avenue. Um, on top of the motor club, which I visited the next night, um, very similar vibes, wonderful. Um, November tenth was the veterans' luncheon, um, and it was also Second Friday on the Avenue. Um, November eleventh was the wired puppy ribbon cutting. It was also Broken Chair's six-year anniversary and Bee Mines four-year anniversary. Um, November thirteenth, I was in, I was, uh, in attendance at a's, well, via Zoom for the pension meeting. Um, November seventeenth, uh, myself and a couple of the other council members, uh, visited the Legacy Cigar Lounge to check in and just kind of see how it's progressed. Um, they're very happy with the Avenue, lots of, you know, happenings there, so very, very good. Um, November eighteenth was the B B B cleanup. Um, and the tree lighting is December first. Um, two things to add. I don't know if you guys, I'm sure you guys saw the email from Chad Moyer for the assistance to the firefighter grant. Um, I've, it's very important we reach out to our legislators, um, Chaz and Chaz, um, to be able to kind of do those things, because as the email said, it's very beneficial to the, uh, department and it keeps walls down, so. Um, please make sure that you're reaching out. Our voices are louder if we do it together. Um, also, in complete transparency, the W R C F obviously is replacing Mark. Um, it is a position that I've thrown my hat into. I know that it is obviously separate from the borough. However, they do report to council for, obviously, their, um, I'm sorry, yeah, so for their reports in regards to like kind of their activity. Um, I did look into it, um, a lot beforehand and talked to, um, an attorney and obviously some of the higher, uh, elected officials to see if there was any conflict of interest. Um, it has not been decided, however, I want to make sure that I'm being incredibly transparent um, and getting ahead any of any, you know, issues or rumors that may be spreading that way. If you guys have any questions, you can ask me. Um, I am okay either way, no matter how it goes. I was obviously involved beforehand. I will obviously be involved after. I really care about the longevity of West Reading, so even beyond my mayor position, I felt there was something that I wanted to kind of involve myself in, so. I just want to make sure that I'm being tr- very transparent about that. Um, that being said, that is my, um, my report. If you have any questions, let me know, and don't forget the tree lighting is December first. And it will be probably chilling, because it always is.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions on the mayor's report? Alright, seeing none, uh, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dravnik, second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Hi.
All opposed. Motion carries. On to the department reports. We'll start with Chief. Onto the department reports, we'll start with Chief Tornelli in Police Department.
Um, just in addition to the report that I submitted to council, just a few items to touch on. Uh, the first is Small Business Saturday, this coming Saturday, we'll have an officer, uh, deployed. Um, in the business district from eleven AM to five PM. So we'll have a dedicated officer, um, out there during Small Business Saturday, so we have a presence. In addition to that, there are a lot of smaller events coming up, um, you know, smaller is in terms of not Fall Fest or Arts on the Avenue. Uh, that information has been pushed out to our officers. They also are getting notifications, uh, when they log into the systems, the beginning of their shifts. Um, if there's any events taking place that day, so that they can, uh, maintain a presence as appropriate in those areas. Um, as mentioned, the tree lighting is December first. We have a full deployment out for that. We'll be finishing up the, uh. Operations plan for that on Monday, uh, final two weeks, but, um, special thanks to the fire department for coming through with, uh, fire police to assist with that. Um, it's a tough area to secure, um, and maintain traffic flow through, so, uh, the additional help is much appreciated. Um, and finally, just did a real quick, uh, analysis of some of the overtime, and it was some things came up during, uh, the budget meetings. Our cover shift overtime, so the overtime that, uh, we use to cover openings and shifts for vacations, uh, folks off sick or at training. Um, from January to October is actually three hundred seventeen dollars below last year's total, so we are trending in the right direction. And we're, and projecting, uh, our twenty twenty-three, um, cover shift overtime to be below last year's, um, this year, so we're doing it much better there. Um, and with the breakdown of special event overtime, uh, we are under budget for that. Um, and looking at Christmas tree lighting as the last, uh, big event that we'll have overtime for, which is not a significant amount. Um, so, uh, we're looking good in that regard as well. And then finally, uh, the action item. Uh, consideration of listing our twenty thirteen Ford Explorer, which is previously, previously deployed as a canine patrol vehicle for sale.
Does anybody have any questions on the action item? Believe that's thirty-eight, thirty-four, right? I'm fairly certain it's thirty-eight, thirty-four. I know that one by heart. Obvious reasons. Uh, looking for approval to list the twenty thirteen Ford Explorer. Are we doing that through Public Clear Plus as well?
Yes, sir. So, uh, Public Works is gonna have to strip it down and whatnot, but yeah.
The dog hair comes at no charge.
Little part of Zia gets to.
Yes.
Go with that vehicle. Uh, motion made by Mr. Lincoln. Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor. All opposed, which carries. Anything else?
That's all I have. Unless there's any questions.
Uh, I want to thank you for sending out, uh, directed patrols around bus stops. Uh, we noticed especially down at Ethan Lakeview, uh, that everybody treats Eighth Avenue as a racetrack in the morning. Trying to skip up Penn Avenue and avoid the light and avoid stop signs on Park especially. Uh, which also means that they miss the extended arm of the school bus as well, so at least once or twice a week. You're the bus horn blaring and people, you know, in a hurry to get somewhere. So, uh, I asked the mayor and Chief Tornelli to, uh, take a look at it, and they've been sending out directed patrols and I appreciate it. Makes me feel better as a parent that I don't have to go out in my safety vest and try to stop traffic, so.
Prefer you not have to do that.
I have one in the truck of my car. It's always handy. Any other questions for the, uh, police report? All right, seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Keg, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to Public Works, Kating.
You have a copy of my report, uh, have any questions, we weren't happy to answer them. We had a busy month as well, uh. Looks like them Memorial Garden is just about done.
Looks great.
It's great. By tight house is just about done, so.
Lots of praise on your, working together with you and the borough crew for the Memorial Gardens, so.
Them guys did an awesome job when they came in.
You did an awesome job, so accept that compliment.
I will, thank you. It's the guys who do it, I just get to point a finger, they do the work.
Actually, this is true, because I watched them put the wreaths up on Penn Avenue. KT was nowhere to be found except for pointing, so. The stormwater drains are amazing.
There's no way I'm going with them, Larry, so.
I, I do have a, um, meeting with Benny, who is the owner of Third Sense Bruce, about moving the book. Uh, that was supposed to be in front of the salon over to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And so he, I had talked to him briefly about it, and he was very interested in talking more about it, so.
Yeah, like you said, he wants to, I'll paint the colors that matches building and.
Yes.
Find a place to put it.
Yep, that's perfect.
Awesome.
And I, I will loop you in as I go on that.
All right, thank you.
And thank you so much for the wreath, for the veterans memorial. Uh, we, we did get a chance to go over and put it up. Um, and it, it looks wonderful, so thank you so much.
Altrusa Club.
Yeah.
Thank Chad for that. Altrusa Club is a group of ladies who go around the city and. And read to the kids in the city, they raise money for books. They actually had a first, uh, free library, it's located out front of, uh. Kids cuts.
That's one of my favorites, yeah.
That's the Altrusa Club, uh, every year. We trying to find an area for him and Chad, who's gave a little visa for our house, so they can make the reason, it was like to donate and.
Yeah. It was, it was a perfect spot. Thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
Are we on top of the new graffiti that was on the bridge about next to the firehouse? Over the whole, whole wall.
Oh, is it? Be after tomorrow then.
Okay, I meant to text you over the weekend, but.
I did not.
I'd wait and then I forgot, so.
Be after tomorrow.
I'll send you.
Any other questions on the public works report? Seeing none, looking for approval.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dropnik. Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to the fire department, Chad.
All right, you'll have a copy of my reports. I did have one action item that popped up after my report was already created. Um, as you know, we had the old engine up for auction, or up for sale and bid acceptance on Brenly Mountain Service or site. We didn't receive any bids in that process. After that process closed, uh, a gentleman from a fire department in North Carolina reached out and showed interest in purchasing the truck. Um, he said that they were willing to purchase it for fifty thousand dollars. So I put an action item for tonight, uh, for council's consideration to accept a conditional offer of purchase for the two thousand C Gray Fire Engine. Uh, the conditions were, um, one, they wanted some updated pictures. I gave them the updated pictures. I liked what they saw. Option two was Dan's consent that we could sell it directly to a volunteer fire department if the bid process failed, which it did. And then, of course, council's approval will be the third condition. Um, our cut, because the, the person found out of a truck through Brenly, because of our agreement there, we're, they're entitled to ten percent of the sale price. So we'd be selling it for fifty thousand, but then we'd have to turn five thousand over to Brenly. So we'd be netting forty-five thousand for the sale.
That's one of those.
It's more than what we thought we were gonna get.
It is, it's definitely fair, fair.
Good truck.
It's more than I probably would have gotten through.
We're happy to have it out of the garage.
Where are they?
Uh, it is, it is south side. I gotta look it up, because the, the town is weird. It is South Side Volunteer Fire Department in Albert Marl, New North Carolina, which is just outside of Charlotte.
We could deliver it.
Please.
In the winter?
I'll drive it.
If council wishes to move forward with the sale, we'll put together either through Dan's help or with Dan's help. Uh, some sort of can, you know, agreement of sale where all that stuff is spelled out, truck sold as is, you know, we're not delivering it, that kind of stuff.
Zach would take it. Yeah.
He'd drive it down there.
Didn't probably see a ship on the way, what was that ship called?
South Dakota.
USS South Dakota.
Sam, seriously. Sorry.
Anyway, looking for consideration to accept a conditional offer of purchase for the, uh, two thousand Seagrave Fire Engine and to draft a bill of sale. So moved, motion made by Mr. Keg. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries.
Oh, that's the only thing I have for you. If you have any questions about the fire department report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions on the fire department report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln. Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to codes.
Let's get any, I'll have a copy of my codes, uh, department report. I'm not much changed there, although I did receive some information. Looks like RM Palmer is looking to demolish. Building five and the old Berkey Building, which would be on the, the, uh, south side of Franklin Street. In the, in the one hundred block.
Timeframe for that?
Uh, they just submitted, uh, some site plans today and are looking for, it had needed some questions answered as far as how our process works for that, so I gave them that information. Uh, with, uh, Pamela's help and I'm sure they'll be submitting a plan shortly. Um, things are moving forward with the compliance engine. I want to get updated to more, uh, some more charts from that. Which go into a little bit more detail about some of the deficiencies that were found in some of the, the properties in terms of fire protection systems. And then all of the other normal, uh, reporting that is there, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions on the code report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries on to the CRF report, Mark.
Uh, we are not having carriage drives this year, the carriage ride company cut back their staffing and, uh. There, so it's a question we got left out, weren't able to locate a new company apparently, that's a trend going on in that. We have a Small Business Saturday this weekend coming up, and the rest of the events are listed on my. The lighting grant coming up, we're, uh, working with Dean in the borough on, uh, coming up with vendor to implement this. So we're moving forward on that. And, uh, Gateway Grant, uh, I met with the Gogler Works yesterday. Pushing forward on that, sending, uh, thinking to Ryan, just to, uh, confirm some things on that. But I do think that there probably should be a council person on a, uh, committee to kind of move us forward on that. So if you guys, if you firmly want to figure out who that is, that'd be great. Uh, Phil's not here, we can't speak to the new codes. And we, I was able to meet, I was included in a meeting with Community Foundation and all the presidents of all the universities. Talking about what they can do to retain, um, their graduates. And keep them in the area and keep them engaged, and one of the biggest things that they thought would help keep their. Um, college kids in the area is getting them more engaged in West Reading. So, you know, we are gonna try to work on doing college nights, some other things with all of the colleges. Uh, we started a small. Discount program with Drexel last year, uh, in few of the businesses in town. But I think we're going to extend, add to a discount for the colleges or any businesses that are looking to get qualified. And, uh, we're working collectively with the presidents to come up with some sort of branding. In the window, so that the students know, hey, this is someplace I can get a, a discount. That's all.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions on the CRF report? Yeah, what's up, Mark?
He said something about the presidents getting, uh, together about keeping graduate college students, like how would West Reading. Be able to retain graduate students in the area.
So we, so I think one of the huge benefits of West Reading is we are a great attraction and retention tool. When, um, CEOs or presidents of different businesses want to hire somebody. And they, one of the first things they do is they drive them through, which show them what a great community we are. Um, that's one of them. If the kids have something to do that they feel is young and hip and not old and. Rabby. They'll bring them into West Reading. This is a vibrant community. We have over thirty-four touchdowns in our community, and so we are by far. Happening area in Burke's Camp.
Really emphasizing on community engagement is what you're trying to teach graduate students and college students, so.
Yeah, I don't know, it, you know, I think that's something that we could work on is. Getting them more engaged, but just showing them what we have to offer and then having them come in and have a good time in West Reading. I think it's more a quality of life thing than it is a, um. A teaching opportunity.
Making them want to live here.
Any other questions on the CRF report? Seeing none, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor. All opposed, motion carries. And we'll go into our committee and commission reports, uh, EDI Task Force, Jan is not here. I do not believe that you guys met this month.
We did not.
We belong to the Recreation Commission and we'll go to Mike.
Good evening, everybody. You have a copy of my report in front of you. Um, just a reminder, our tree lighting ceremony is next Friday on the first. Big thank you for. Proving the partial closure of the circle, I have a. New performer this year, running Coral Society, headed by Rod Nevin, uh, the backdrop actually is. Handled by the wine, uh, two students from Wyman's High School, who are gonna get community service hours for painting a beautiful backdrop. Uh, for the Showmobile.
No pictures of you this year? Your mom's not bringing the pictures of you to hang on the, on the wall.
But have donations for, from RM Palmer's for our performers, ornaments, et cetera. Something cool that just popped up too, uh, we were just speaking this past week, a, a company called Aurora Light LLC. Is actually going to be handling lighting our tree. So they are, um, a sister company from a, uh, it's a young group of individuals called Yayo's Painting. They've been handling some, uh, painting, uh, jobs within the borough, and this is gonna be their first time lighting a tree. They got LED lights. So I'm excited to see what they can do, um, with this, and they're gonna have a tent set up. Promoting the painting business, the lighting business, et cetera. So definitely, uh, a very generous move by them, uh, to handle providing lights for our tree from. Uh, they're gonna be here Tuesday, and I told them we just need it until after the holidays, where they can start taking the lights down, which are, which they own. But then we have our holiday home decorating contest, so Rec Commission will be going, looking at the houses that register. They get prizes for the top three. Chris, you will probably have another beautiful house again, and we'll probably win again.
Has nothing to do with me. My wife thanks you.
Um, but other than that, just, uh, after the tree lighting, it's time to gear up for pool playground. And start drawing up all that kind of stuff, and then we got some good things in the works to try to bring things up to, uh, this century, right, Ron?
Trying to.
Yep, so.
Now, Mike and I talked, uh, last Friday about, uh, making the playground and pool able to, you're able to register. From your computer, from your phone, no more printing off a PDF file, filling it out, bring, having to bring it into the Borough Hall or. Call or mail it in, or we are in the year of our Lord twenty twenty-three, and we should be able to sign up for these things from our phone. So we're moving in that direction with some help from, uh, Jeanette and Helen and trying to get, well, good workflow figured out. Uh, but hopefully that will be, uh, consideration as well as the potential for payment, uh. Well, payment options, uh, that would include being able to pay monthly for these types of things, rather than one bulk sum payment. Which is extremely prohibitive to a lot of families in West Reading, uh, so their ability to pay on it over time. And have it as a recurring payment as opposed to one big lump sum, you know, spending a thousand dollars at one shot. Not everyone can do that, so this will be a good step in the direction to have everybody not have such a barrier to. Attending the pool or playground.
What season ticket plan for just pool and playground membership?
One suggestion going along with that came up from a resident this year that moved into the borough midsummer. If there's a way to do a pro-rated, uh, season pass, so that they're not paying. The full rate if they're only here for half the summer, the last half of the summer. Yeah, whatever it is, something to think about as you're putting that together.
I mean, we can, and too, we can keep track of the pass numbers that come through the door, so we virtually have to kind of backtrack and see how many times they visited. The pool and then, yeah, that's the case.
So I believe they. Yeah, at least at this point, you couldn't do that. It was either you could get the season pass. Midway through December, it's full price, or pay a daily rate.
We have, we have a, we have a ten-day pass too as well. So, I mean, if you're gonna come to the pool ten days, that might be a better option, but that's just for one individual person. It's definitely worth it. So I mean, if you're going to come to the pool ten days, that might be a better option, but that's just for one individual person. It's definitely worth exploring.
Thanks. There's a lot of juice to squeeze there.
Yeah.
Right. It's a great idea.
Denise, do you have anything to add?
Oh, just that we, we continue to have a very energized Recreation Commission. We have great volunteers and they're excited and making plans for 2024. Trying some new things and getting rid of some things that maybe have run out of steam. So always looking to tweak it.
Good thanks. Any other questions on the Rec Commission report? Seeing done, looking for approval. I moved. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries on to the Planning Commission and the lone member here is Chris. I mean, I can review it. It was all zone based. Yeah, it was all the, the new zoning code based form.
Yeah, so we continued our discussions on the form-based code updates with Dirk and Edson. That will be an ongoing process for the next seven months, which is thrilling. But important. And I think the end result will be very useful for the borough to help achieve the vision that the, the borough has for the business district. So it's nitty gritty. We're working through it slowly, but I think we're making good progress in the two or three sessions that we've had so far.
Does anybody have any questions on the Planning Commission report? Seeing none, looking for approval.
I moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dropnik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keg, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries on to EDC. I'll be quicker than Phil. Winnie Moki is slated to open in spring 2024 down at 400 Penn where Benchwarmers used to be. Prime Tobacco Zone is now open at 438. BV Bubble Tea is going in where the old subway was. The opening is still yet to be determined there. Derby Photography just opened at 530 Penn Avenue, which is where the meterie used to be. And then a light in the attic, as we mentioned before, they just opened at 719 Penn Avenue. So just to the left-hand side of Barley Mo, go upstairs. It's on the second floor. Over in Y Missing, there's the potential to build apartments over the Berkshire Family Restaurant that they're currently working on. And then things for strategic planning on our end. The shopping center, they've put new doors on the businesses with some accent lighting. They're still working with the design standards. And there is no update on the bid at this time or the railroad bridge. There you go. Any questions? And looking for approval.
I moved.
Motion made by Ms. Dropnik. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. EAC was canceled due to lack of discussion topics, which takes us into TNI, Chris.
All right. I think we covered most of the items earlier in the agenda tonight with the Bulk Refugees collection and the changes in parking restrictions. One item I would note that we're continuing to discuss is the borough's permit parking program. And looking at what the overall overhaul of that program looks like. We've kind of defined the goals of a study to be completed. We're hoping to maybe get some pricing on that. And hopefully it's not a budget buster that we can somehow fit in 2024. I don't know that we'll have that information immediately, but hopefully it's at a point, a cost point where we can find that money in the budget next year. So working through that to, to help modernize and expand that program potentially. Other than that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the traffic and infrastructure report? I think that you did touch on the water and sewer valve cam.
We did. Yes, we did.
That somehow came up on voices and made its way into TNI.
Well, I'm glad it did because I've been thinking about it for years and I keep forgetting to ask Kerry about it. So I brought it up there, which seemed like a good place to do it. Public Works is responsible as it turns out.
That's exactly what I would have suggested.
I'm making my list. Fill me a few pages so far.
Any questions on the ETI report then? Seeing none, looking for approval. I moved. Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Again.
Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Shade Tree was canceled this month. Safety was canceled for this month, but last month they had a meeting on October the 18th.
Right.
What did you talk about, Dean?
Plenty of stuff. We're always staying on top of the game and everybody's staying safe. So the copy of October's committee meeting is in front of you. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Any questions on the safety committee? Seeing done, looking for approval. Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
This is, just as a quick side note. We are scheduling first aid and CPR if anybody's interested here. I'll get that information, see me afterwards. I'll get that information day out.
Thank you.
Then next up is the pension committee, which met on November the 13th. They gave a presentation. So currently we run it through PSAB. They also had representative from Morgan Stanley and from Thomas Anderson Associates there as well. So they went through the, the current standing of the pension, went over market conditions and you know, why we looked at a bad year last year and a better year this year and what is driving that better year in the market. Surprise, it's Facebook, Apple, all the big tech companies. So they continue to monitor the investments and PSAB is very confident in the fact that a lot of funds took a even greater hit last year than the one that pension fund did. And they anticipate that to, you know, swing in the positive direction this year. Does anybody have any questions on the pension committee? Seeing none, looking for approval. So motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries on to the Treasurer's Report. Jeanette, now that you're
Her laptop.
All plugged in. Oh, she's not all plugged in.
Hi. Would you want me to share the budget on the, on the monitors?
Uh, you can.
Uh, yeah, for the third act, I'm sure.
Had you the share screen.
In the meantime, we can hit some of the other action items on there. I'll jump a little out of place here. So before you, you have the financial statement for the 10 months ending October 31st, 2023. And also the payment approval reports from 1018 to 1116 and then 1117 to the 21st. So I'm looking for, take some time if you need it, and then approve the financial statement and payment approval reports. Make a motion to approve. Sure do. Motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Obnick, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. You ready, Jeanette? I'll keep going.
The share button.
I option of sharing, so.
That's right. We move on to the first action items then. So before you, you have consideration to approve the transfer of $700,000 from the Pligot Prime account to the MNT Bank account. We keep playing musical chairs because the interest rate is almost doubled over at with Pligot. So it behooves us to keep money in there as much as possible to get the higher interest rate. Does anybody have any questions on approving the transfer of 700,000? Otherwise looking for approval.
I moved.
Motion made by Mr. Keg.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And then we do have two term accounts that are coming due in November. So we're looking for consideration of reinvesting those terms to either a Pligot term or prime account. Jeanette did put the maturity dates on there as well as the rates. The maturity dates that you would be looking at moving forward would be a one year and I'll wait for a little bit more. There we go. All right, Jeanette, we're on the second action item for the reinvesting the, the term.
Yes. So Dean and I spoke with Matt Conlin from PFM representing Pligot Investments. And he said that he would recommend that we, if we could put money into about a nine-month term product. Because he does believe that the the rates will go down. I believe is the Fed, he's going to probably be dropping about a quarter percent. So the market will, will do more than that. So even though prime is about 2.8% now. They're offering a nine-month for 5.69%. So he's recommending that we do just because he thinks it's going to go down the, the plan. And I believe we would have a million dollars available for that length of time period. I, I believe in the packet, there's also a graph showing our, our combined fund balance to help us to see that we do have what we funds available.
And it's improving year over year.
It is, yes.
Is there a specific amount that we're looking to, are we just looking to reinvest one of the?
Yeah, I think a million dollars we could afford to invest for that long.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise we'll look to reinvest a million dollars from an expiring Pligot term into a new nine-month term at 5.69%.
What are we doing with the other one that's expiring?
Uh, we were just going to keep that in the, the prime account.
Okay.
Yeah, because until we get our tax revenue, it's going to, I think, keep going a little bit lower.
Q1 is always kind of a slog until
Yeah.
taxes come in. Well, I was looking for consideration to reinvest a million dollars of nine months. I'm, motion made by Mr. Lincoln.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dropnik, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Now we can get on to the draft budget.
Okay. I know Cindy handed out the tax estimate worksheet, but I don't think we need to review that unless anybody wants to. It just shows it's going to 9.25 mils, the general tax. So should I go along by the paper copy that everybody has? Did anybody bring their paper copy that we should go through it? Or I can just do it on the screen on one monitor.
That's fine.
Monitor, okay.
Yep, that's fine.
That's you. So basically I only changed one revenue as we were speaking. We had $30,000 into the fire company, the fire truck for next year. So we're going to be getting that money this year, I believe. Did you want me to change that then? From, from next year to this year for the revenue for the fire truck?
The, I, I think, perfectly, but I think the plan for that money would be to put that in the fire company special reserve. Help offset the cost of door replacements.
Okay.
Think we discussed the budget in time, if I'm not mistaken.
Um, that's fine. So it's going to be 45,000 this year as opposed to 30,000 next year. That right?
Well, it depends on the sale.
Yeah. I mean, you think it's going to be done in the next month?
I, they were, they sounded like they were going to be ready to go as soon as we were ready to go.
Okay.
So I mean, it's not, I would expect it to be before the end of the year. It's not going to take that long. We have to get an agreement of sale as long as they can come up here and we can get it signed by both parties and executed.
Okay.
I hope that would be before the end of this year.
Okay. All right. So I'll just keep the 45 this year and then once we get it, we'll put it in the special reserve. That's the only revenue change that, that was handed out or done. A few changes were made since we handed it out on Friday. Uh, but what did change was we received an estimate from Sam Harder from Tompkins Insurance. He has it higher than what I had projected. It is still an estimate though. He's still getting the estimate from Travelers. We're in the process of filling out the applications. That he has is increasing right now around 20%. And there's also an increase in workman's comp. Our experience modifier increased from 0.901 to 1.08 or something like that. So those are the, basically the changes in the expenses. Also, some good news is that the Teamsters Healthcare, we're saving about close to $40,000 because we're switching from composite rate to component rate. The Teamsters offer us whichever is most beneficial financially to us. Composite rate is, is they have a rate for everybody. It doesn't matter what your family composition is. You get charged one rate. Uh, component rate is, is depending on if you're single, married, family, then you get charged that amount. So we're saving it almost $40,000 with switching to composite rate. Uh, yes, you can see like 0140196. I lowered that down to 94 for next year. I changed the salary patrolman to one, one new officer. And so it'll be 1.145 million for next year and the officer who is in the drop can retire January of 2026. Health insurance across the board was all changed. Workman's comp was increased there. Though since our experience modifier increased, that goes across for all different categories. A large change that happened since Friday, it's not in the budget that was handed out, was the LSA grant for cameras. I discovered that I only had the amount of the grant that we're receiving in in the expense amount. So I had to add in the $25,000 extra plus 47 and change for the borough's match. So that raised about $75,000 under the LSA grant for the county. No changes in the fire companies, giving insurance. No changes in code except for that also. I already had in for the safety net. Centurion. So that brings us to deficit of $355,190 for this year. And if we do receive the money from the Sonic Lodge, it would be a deficit of $264,879. The majority of that from what I handed out to this is the LSA camera grant, 75,000. That's why it's a lot higher. And then to go to the water fund. So the water fund. Raising the rates 15% for commercial, 10% for residential. We should end the year with a surplus of $737,876. So the new rep, water revenue was 1.880,000, $1,880,000. Water purchase was lowered to the 10%. Sewer nothing is changed. Sewer nothing's changed. Trash. We should end the year with one hundred ninety one thousand two hundred seventy four fund balance. For what I handed out um it's our six hundred and eighty thousand dollar revenue. And with, with ending the year around seven hundred and four, six hundred and eighty didn't sound very logical to me. So I, I looked at that this afternoon. And I, I noticed that I did not have in there that the penalties are also included in that. So I added in, it's around twelve, thirteen thousand dollars a year we get in penalty revenue. So that's why that's not six eighty, it's six ninety four. So that bumped up the fund balance with, with realizing that the penalties are also in there. So that has like no increase, you know, um. Oh, I hit the amount, but it's a hundred dollars for quarter for this year and a hundred and five for the next two years. Um and there's uh it's seventy five going out. Going out to the alley. Uh another change I made was the transfer from general fund. It was higher than four hundred thirty one because I had put money in there for the fire company garage store. But when looking back at it, I, I thought that that should actually come from the fire tax. So I moved the it was like sixty or seventy thousand. Sixty thousand from, transfer from general to transfer for, from the fire tax. So that's more earmarked just for the, from the fire company. And then there's the seventy five coming in from trash fund, engineering change because we added that seventy five in there to twenty five, two hundred. Uh highway capital. So I have that at three sixty now. That is, this would review this, Kerry, since he's right here. Seventy thousand for Grape Street, fifteen thousand curbs, sixty thousand for Fifth Avenue from Oak to Penn.
That was a hundred sixty.
It was a hundred and sixty. On your sheet that you gave us, you had that you're gonna save sixty thousand in that area somewhere?
I know, I was gonna save in the water. Uh.
It's, that was water.
Yeah, in the water department, we're gonna do the uh Sixth Avenue for a hundred thousand and zero hundred bucks a south one. And I said I'll do it in-house for about forty thousand, between thirty and forty thousand.
All right. So I'll have to put sixty back in there. So that's four hundred and twenty thousand. All right, so that's gonna add sixty thousand dollars to our deficit. Cause I have to transfer that from general. That's pretty much it. Nothing changed besides that. But yeah, when I handed that out, somehow I was confused that um sixty thousand. Highway capital expense, the budget I handed out had two hundred and eighty five thousand on it, which had the sixty taken out. So that was a mistake apparently when I handed that out on Friday. So it brings to four hundred fifteen thousand one hundred ninety dollar deficit.
What was our deficit this year that we were looking at? That we came in under?
We're budgeted at little under three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in deficit and we ended up to the positive five hundred sixty six, nine sixty seven. Or at least that's what's on my one from Friday.
Yeah, it's approximate. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm.
Now it's up closer to almost six oh eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause if I don't transfer that money, you can see that the capital fund balance is, is negative fifty nine thousand now. So I have to move money from general to funds, capital.
Anything else on the uh budget then?
No.
Okay. Uh so there is an action item on there. It's obviously we need to uh start working on this thirty days prior to the end of the year, which we have obviously done. We also have a proposed budget uh more than thirty days out. Now we get to uh have it sit on display with Cindy for ten days, correct Dan? So does anybody have any questions regarding the uh draft budget? All right. Seeing none, looking for approval to provide notice of the proposed twenty twenty four budget.
The move.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second, second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Anything else for the treasurer's report? All right. Seeing none, we'll move into our last round of public comment. Jim? Uh so last meeting, uh we had gotten notice that somebody wanted to utilize that space there at Olive and Walnut. Uh but they wanted to place a two unit building on that property. So in doing so, they are kind of creating their own hardship by, cause they could build just one. But they were looking to build two. So.
Facing Olive Street.
Facing Olive.
Yeah, facing Olive.
Yep.
Into the hill.
Yep. That's the Reader's Digest version. About a hundred and seventy one thousand? It doesn't do much. That's the thing. It's all property value. I think we can just direct them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh if we do have that information, could we ask that you guys send it over to Jim on?
Yeah.
We have.
We will be glad to share any information we have. We'll, we'll do that, yes.
Perfect. There you go, Jim. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone online? Tootch?
Sorry, I was not here. I had my own municipal authority meeting that I attended. Um any questions for EMS?
Anything for EMS?
I don't think, good.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, man.
Thanks.
What was that? What was that? Oh, no. Appreciate it.
All right. Uh seeing no other public comment, I will close the floor and look for a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Motion made by Mr. Keg. Second by Mr. Lincoln, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Dean, you lost your bet.
Four minutes.